You'll make your own agenda?
Thank you for permission.
Call to order. We'll have approval minutes of the ready meeting of March 10th.
I had the motion to approve the minutes.
March 10th. Does everyone have a chance to take a look at any admissions or corrections? Yes, sir?
Still, my last name's R.Y.A.N.
Nobody cares, Ron.
Appreciate that.
R.Y.A.N., thank you very much. I'm sorry about that. Anything else we have to correct or anything we've left out? Thank you very much for covering all those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. There is no objection. We'll just call it as approved by unanimous consent. First agenda item is Daniel Matthews' proposal for Calpine Community Garden project. Oh, I'm sorry.
I had some.
Oh, that's a new slide. Okay, I'm sorry. I agree, which is public input. We invite you to three minutes. You can speak on any subject that's not on the agenda. Anything that's on the agenda is not allowed to speak to until that item comes up. And we'll start on this side. If you have public input, raise your hand. I'll recognize you and you can stand up and expound for three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question. And for a long time, Mark has been talking about the traffic down in Santa Clara. At one time, there was some thought to doing one of those things that tells you how fast you're going. I had a guy go in about 70 miles an hour the other day. And then instead of Porsches go by, about eight of them going probably 50 miles an hour. So I just wondered if that was any possibility of that coming?
It... We had a meeting with Todd Menzel from Public Works. And he recognized the problem and was sympathetic to our concerns. What happens is people turn on by the Central Park and go down Santa Clara to beat the light and the backup at the corridor of 175 and 29. And they go down Santa Clara very fast and make the turn. And we were talking about making some changes down there to help that. And then we had a little bonfire. And all that has been put on hold at this point. I'm sorry to say. And we have not forgotten it. And as soon as they get all the other things out of the way, we'll bring that to them again because that is a problem. We have a Friday night rodeo down there during summer. And the people come by there. And you're right, they're in a hurry to get home and I understand that. But we can't have them driving like that on that road. Yes, sir?
Okay, prior to the fire. The theory was there's an expense to it. And supposedly, if we came up with part of the expense, they could probably come up with other part. That has all, I'm sure, changed since then. So that was prior to the fire, so we need to readdress this.
Supervisor, come through.
If you can give me the worst times for the violators. Hector Perataz, CHP commander, really good guy, on good terms. He hasn't given any tickets.
Must be a good guy.
I will take those times to him and get our local CHP transfer, the guy that wanted to make the transfer. So we need to get Hector really responsive. So if you can give me the worst time... They can't camp out there.
I can tell you exactly what time. Starts at 5:30 a.m. with traffic coming off of Highway 175.
That's the guy heading south.
Heading south over the hill. So that lasts until about 6:30 in the morning. And then there's a lull. And then everybody's rushing to get everybody to school because everybody's running late. So there's the traffic then. And then it's real quiet during the day for the most part. And then the afternoon, it starts up in the reverse direction. So and then it depends if there's a lot of activity going on over at the event center or at the horsey thing, then there's a lot of trailer traffic, especially livestock haulers.
Well, yeah, they're starting.
Yeah.
So 5:30 a.m. till about 6:30?
6:30 is the worst part.
And then quarter to 8 for the school.
And then after, right after the high school lets out, there's a lot of... We had for three days in a row, two cars drag racing side by side.
I'll take it to Hector.
Great, thank you.
Several tickets will take care of the work.
Any other comments on that? Yes, sir?
My name is Don Lopez. And my topic is road repair. I've noticed driving up the Capitol on several occasions that Caltrans is spending millions of dollars repairing roads in my opinion don't really need to be done. And you drive around the rest of our district that's not on the county highway. And I don't see any kind of repairs done by the county. And I was wondering if there's grants out there that the county could go after or is there fire funds, wherever there are, to start repairing our own roads that we drive on?
We... I had a meeting with Todd Menzel, who is director or something at Public Works. We talked about roads. And he said, "We'd put in for FEMA money. And if FEMA gives them money, then they will spend it on the roads." Highway 175 is a different animal. That's a state highway. We have no say in that. And we have no way to access those funds for county roads. And I know my road, if it comes into my place, I can't drive on it. The big trucks has a big machines that turn it up so bad that I went to them and said, "What are you gonna do?" He said, "We're not gonna do anything. We have no money to do anything." I said, "Well, do you mind if I gravel the road, fix it?" He said, "No, go ahead." So that's where we're at. Supervisor, do you have anything?
Actually, there's a possibility that we are going to get some money through Caltrans for county roads. Don't hold your breath. But we're actively working on it. And I wouldn't say that I'm even cautiously optimistic, but we're working on that. The money FEMA has said that the before and the after, they'll get us back to the way the roads were before. Imperfectly honest, FEMA sold a lot of things. 98% of them haven't been true. So we're still working on that. So I wish I could say we're gonna get the money from FEMA. But I'm not holding my breath on FEMA money.
Please, we're still in the county side.
We are going after it.
Okay, anybody else have comment on this side?
No. Oh, yes, comment.
Go ahead, Boris.
Yes, the second annual fundraiser for the Get To Museum and Cultural Center will be next month at the mansion. And we're gonna have Civil War skirmishes as well as Scarlett O'Hara and all kinds of wonderful food. And it's a wonderful fundraiser. And then the following year, the plan is to have a full Civil War reenactment. And it's basically based on the fact that we have Civil War veterans in the Middletown Cemetery that have been identified also. The candidates forum that Calpine and the Chamber of Commerce are hosting next week is scheduled at 7:00 p.m., not 6:00 p.m. They've changed.
We're gonna have a flyer on that, Boris.
Oh, okay.
And on the Civil War thing, frankly, my dear, I don't give a damn.
Thank you very much.
Now, the event center, it's gonna be the mansion, is the event center on 29 outside of town.
That's correct.
And what was the date?
May 14th.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else down this way? Coming to the back? Any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Beth Ritterger. I'm the board of the Middletown Area Merchants Association. And we have a mom meeting next Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. here in this building across the hall, if you're interested in attending. We are also doing a spring celebration dinner on April 26th up at the Village Pub that's being catered by Barbara Flynn. So everybody's invited. And if you want one of these, I have invitations here. So then we need RSVPs right away, so if you're interested. And then I also coordinate the Middletown Luncheon Club. And this Wednesday, that's also here, the senior center, this Wednesday coming up, the 20th, we're having a candidates forum. And all of the supervisor candidates will be there. The lunch runs from noon to 1:00. And reservations are absolutely required because it will sell out. There's only a limited number of seats. So if you're interested in that, it's a $5 lunch. You can come give me your name. It's not like this. Yeah, I'm not gonna do that. Come tell me. I'll write it down.
Ma'am?
My turn?
Yes.
Okay, I just... My name's Julie Kreese. And I wanted to give an update. There was a scoping meeting about the vineyard, the Wild Diamond Vineyard, going in near Hidden Valley about a week ago. And they're going to do a draft environmental impact report about it. People have concerns about the depletion of water and contamination of water and also pollution to the homes that live nearby and noise and such. I was emotionally and made very sad by the report of a homeowner at the top of the mountain that lives right next to the vineyard and thought that the vineyard was a really good neighbor until they cut down all the ponderosa and pine and everything. And now there's a bear on his property that's been displaced. And there's deer bolting against the fences and trying to dig under the fences. And another neighbor said there's no more harpy eagles. And basically... Oh, and the other thing is that just to remove what was kind of the already okay stuff to be clear cut and burnt up, he said that it burned with terrible air condition up there for three weeks like the valley fire. And nothing was done whenever he couldn't. So he's very concerned about additional work with that kind of a condition happening. So anyway, that's just a little update. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Marlene?
Marlene Elder, I just wanted to let everyone know that we are trying to get a neighborhood watch program going in the Middletown area. And we are meeting at 6 o'clock before the MAP meeting next week, if anyone would like to come. I'm sorry, next month. But yeah, 6 o'clock before the next MAP meeting. And we sold out of signs at this meeting that we had tonight, but we will have more signs so that people can post neighborhood watch signs on their property, not on county property or community property or business properties. So we'll have some more signs at the next one. Cheryl, sitting over there, is our leader. And we're gonna try and get that going for the next meeting. And we're trying to coordinate some training as well for that meeting.
Do you have sign up sheets available?
Oh, yeah, we have sign up sheets available if anyone would like to sign up to ride with somebody or whatever. We have magnets for the doors for the cars so that we can start doing some patrolling.
I just want to talk about the public assistance dollars that Don Lopez was mentioning. There were timeframes, obviously, and I know the county's been diligent about doing that. But there are FEMA dollars out there. It's gonna take a while to get them. We have successfully entered all of our grants. Obviously, they won't take everything. The road impact fees is a big part of that. And I know the county's still working on that. And you can't put it in until all the work is done. So it could be two years or three years. But I know you gotta have... You had, there was a certain time to have them in, I think it was three months ago, to have the grants in to get them started. And now it's just documenting, documenting, documenting everything that's happening and all the impacts. But the road impact fees, that is a big part of it. We have successfully already written our grant for the impacts that we had with all the big trucks and everything in our parking lots and stuff. So we know it can be done. You just need to document everything and just keep pushing FEMA as much as possible. So there will be dollars. It's gonna take years to get it, but at least there will be something coming in the long term.
Through special districts, there's a... Jan Kopinger is very, very precision. And I didn't say what it was about. She was ready to physically jump up and throw the person out of her office. And she kept persisting and she got it. It can happen. It's not easy, not short. And you get told a lot of things that you're gonna have to continue to check on. Some will be true and some won't be.
One other thing to focus on is ask for this guy. You're gonna have to negotiate down. And three words in prick and freedom's language, right? Document, document, document. And that's what you need to do all the time with this.
No document, no pay.
Yeah. And we, like I said, we successfully did our grant for... We did, so I know the county will be diligent about that, move that through. It's just gonna take time.
Public Works, the road department. What kind of documentation is required?
Documentation would be, from our point of view, what we did was we had our initial, you know, what it costs to do the parking lots, years of damage, what we'd have for repairs, you know, what was unexpected at the time. You know, right now, it's all the big trucks is really what did the damage, especially with the rain. How much, you know, base rock you had, be it its county roads. All those documents should be there. And expected, you know, sealing recoveries, filling of potholes, that should all have been lined out in a timeframe of what you're gonna be fixing. So documenting from the beginning of life of the road, what condition it was in before the fire, and then being able to prove that all that damage from the vehicles throughout the recovery, which is very easy. I mean, we have it all over the place. So it's just being diligent and staying on top of FEMA.
Thank you, Bo. Any other comment? I'm going to vote. Yes, go ahead, Linda.
Hi, my name is Lynda Deal-Darnes. And one thing that I wanted to say is yesterday, my husband Tom and I closed our auto repair business, Tom's Auto Dynonics. And I just wanted to thank everyone so much for the support, the community support, customer support, friend support. Really, really, truly appreciate it. And we tried every which way to try to keep it open. And it just was not something that was falling into place. So anyway, I wanted to tell you thank you. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is I would like us to revisit the bylaws and maybe consider going back to having representation in the different areas like we had had originally. I notice currently, there's like three people from the Middletown area on the board, or four people, and one member at large. And I'm one of the Middletown representatives, but I would be willing to give up my seat if there are people who are willing to represent the different areas. So I just wanted to say that. And I'd like to see it on the agenda next time.
Can I have a question on that? Rumor says, and I know you'll know, that Hidden Valley said they did not want to participate. Is that true or not? Okay, well, I don't know where you're from. We didn't say anything.
Member at large, they call it. But I'm here.
For your information, two months ago, I made a proposal to the town hall to amend the bylaws to bring those areas back into the bylaws and elect people from those districts. And I was voted down. Yeah, can you believe that?
I can't.
But I was voted down, so we're gonna revisit it at the next meeting. It's Linda who brought it to our attention. I think it's necessary. I think it's time. And I think it would be a plus for Middletown Town Hall. If we have no other comments or...
Sorry. I gotta say. Don, Linda, thank you very much for your services. I got one more to add on that. I vote no.
Absolutely, cows. Thank you. The other issue, of course, is that Ron's place over at Menzio's, it burned down with auto repair. And now Tom and Linda are going away. We're gonna be going to Santa Rosa for auto repair.
No.
If you need to repair, you can't get to Santa Rosa.
There are other places.
Can't do that. Lake County.
We hate to...
Don't say that.
Okay, if no other comment, public comment, I'm gonna close the public comment, bring it back to the agenda. Item four is Daniel Matthews' proposal for Calpine Community Garden project. Before I recognize Daniel, a lady called me. She said that Daniel would like to know if she could put something on the agenda. And my history with Daniel and Calpine has been one of absolute admiration and thankfulness that they're around. And I'll give you an example. We're at the county fair and the kids are selling their animals. And some kids don't have much luck selling their animals. And they're crying. And all of a sudden, we have a bitter and kind of fight on Daniel. And she spent a lot of Calpine's money buying animals to support the kids. Now, there is nothing more important than our children. And Daniel, I know she represents Calpine, but she could pick other places to spend that money. And she chooses to spend that money helping our kids. And when the lady said, "Can she put something on the agenda?", I said, "She could put anything she wants on the agenda." So with that, Daniel's proposal for Calpine Community Garden project, I'll recognize you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, all. So I head up government community fairs for Calpine, which includes the visitor center. And Calpine owns the lot next to the visitor center, which is currently an empty lot. And I've always envisioned some kind of community project there. There's been ideas, but nothing's ever really kept together. So when North Coast Opportunities reached out and suggested the possibility of a community garden in that area, I thought it was a great idea. And after I met with Ava Ryan here, she is a true expert in community gardens. She will... I'm actually gonna turn it over to her because she has led several North Coast Opportunities successful gardens in Lake County and Mendocino County. And it just seems like a really great fit. But it won't be the Calpine Community Garden. It'll be the Middletown Community Garden. So before we move forward, we would want complete community buy-in from everyone. So she's here to tell you a little bit about how community gardens work, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Daniel.
Hi, everyone. So I'm Ava Ryan. I work for North Coast Opportunities, as Danielle mentioned. And I work specifically on a project called The Gardens Project, which is one of our community wellness projects. So that usually focuses around food, nutrition, food access, and things like that. The Gardens Project has been around since 2007. It started in Mendocino County. And we currently have about 38 successful community gardens in Mendocino County, predominantly in Ukiah. Some really big ones, 40, you know, family plots in, you know, a half acre to a three-quarter acre area. And we're producing tons and tons of food. I think it's like, I don't know, I forget the actual number, but it might be like 40 or 68 tons of food. So quite a lot of food. We're feeding a lot of families. And that's really our mission with these community gardens, is to help create access so that people who don't have land access can grow their own food. It helps, you know, relieve poverty, alleviate food insecurity as well. So that's really our goal and our mission. We received a three-year USDA community food projects grant in November to work in Lake County as well. So that's why I'm here. And I have been actively looking for properties and communities that want community gardens. One of our key and core philosophies is community ownership. None of the gardens are my gardens. I help build them. I help facilitate. I help teach people how to garden. We run free workshops. We do leadership training so that, you know, the gardens feel empowered. But they're not my gardens at the end of the day. It's the community's garden, and it really belongs to whoever's actually gonna be there and growing the food. So a little bit about how it works is that we have money to help build some of the infrastructure, to put up the fence, to do some of the irrigation, all the trenching, putting in new lines and things like that, building some raised beds. We get tons of free compost donations. We get all kinds of donations of seeds and stuff like that. And so with a community group, which is what we've already sort of started at Calpine, we've been having a few meetings with various community members, reaching out through Facebook, through word of mouth, through flyers. We've had two meetings so far, gotten a pretty good showing. And I've heard a lot of buzz and a lot of interest among Middletown folks. It seems like something that is desired in the community. Our grant was written and awarded before the fires happened. And since the fires happened, we really wanted to move into this area when Middletown residents are ready. Because I think that gardens are healing spaces as well as food production spaces. They're places not just for physical and nutritional health, but also for mental health. And so I think it would be great to have a really beautiful garden right here, right on the highway. So we've been having these meetings, working with the community groups, people who are coming to start planning and designing these gardens. And what we laid out this afternoon is about a hundred foot by a hundred foot area. And it's kind of right in the middle of that lot. It's all staked out and flagged out. If you wanna go and take a look, you're more than welcome to go do that. We also staked out some bed sizes. We do raised beds that are 10 feet by 4 feet as well as in-ground beds that can be, you know, pretty much any size, but usually either 5 by 10s or 10 by 10s or 20 by 20s, depending on family size and what people are interested in. And then once that's done, we kind of go ahead and build it. We like to create leadership teams in our gardens. So those are the gardeners who, you know, are kind of the key point people. So not... People aren't always coming to me. They have a resource within their own community that they can draw from. So we usually have a general manager, kind of a irrigation manager, a compost manager. Sometimes there's two co-managers depending. And that's just like your point person who knows everyone who's there, who's checking to make sure the water isn't leaking. It's all volunteer. But we do leadership training with them so that they feel empowered within their own communities and so that they can act as a positive force within their communities as well. With that, we also write up contracts. So we write up contracts with the landowners, but also contracts within the gardens. And that's something that all the community members decide on, you know? These are the laws of the garden essentially. And usually, it's things like the gardens open from dawn to dusk. We always have a lock on it, a combo lock, as well as on our sheds for all our pools and things like that. All the gardeners have access to that combo lock. And we just ask that they're respectful, if they bring guests in and things like that. So our contract outlines all those rules. Just make sure everyone's safe, nothing illegal is happening. The garden's a safe space, a friendly space. Everyone's paths are well-weeded. Nobody's taking over. No one's stealing tomatoes or anything like that. And it does happen. It definitely does happen. So, you know, that kind of just keeps everyone in check. The other thing that we do is we charge a small nominal fee, it's about $20 to $40 per plot, per family, per year. And that basically goes into a garden pool fund. And that fund is for whatever the gardeners decide they want it for. If they wanna have events, that's what it can go for. If they need new tools when their tools break, that's what it's for. If they have to pay water costs, which some of our properties do pay water costs, some of them, the water is donated depending, and that's something we're still sort of working out, then some of it would go towards water costs. But it's their money to do with what they want. We're a nonprofit, so we're not taking anything of it. And that's sort of kind of how it works. The produce is all theirs. If they wanna sell it, that's fine with us. If they wanna give it away to all their friends, that's fine with us as well. But it's theirs to grow whatever they want, and we're just there sort of to help facilitate that and provide support. But ultimately, we want all the gardens to be self-sustained, to manage themselves. And a lot of our gardens are. Some of the larger ones have a little trouble, but for the most part, they kind of get into a rhythm and a flow. It's really wonderful to watch so many people together learning from each other and growing lots of good food. So with that, yeah.
Thank you. Do you have any questions you wanna ask Ava? Any questions to your garden?
Yeah.
Boris?
Is this garden similar to the NCO garden in Clearlake? Can you say to you, "Clearlake"?
You mean the one at our office?
Yes.
So it's gonna be slightly different. The one in the office is exclusively managed by me, which is a whole lot of work on top of all the other work I do. If you wanna help me out with it, we're having a work party on Sunday. And that one is strictly, it's not a community garden, so nobody owns those plots. That's for the food pantry. And when we have the food pantry on Wednesdays, whoever's in line can come in and I'm there and they're welcome to take whatever they want. But people don't have those plots, but it'll look something similar. And if somebody wants to see what one of these gardens looks like, our website, gardensproject.org, has examples of all of our gardens. We have tons of Flickr photos. You can see gardens from the very beginning all the way to the end. We're also having a big work day on Saturday. I'm helping put a garden in at the Highland Senior Center in Clearlake. They've got a lot of infrastructure already in, but we'll be building some raised beds and stuff like that, discarding everything and staking out plots, yeah.
The grant is for three years.
Yes.
However, when you put that kind of energy into creating it, what is the length of time Calpine has agreed to allow it to stay there? Danielle?
Well, so we haven't... There's really no agreement yet. We first have to make sure there's enough community buy-in and there isn't a lot of We first have to make sure there's enough community buy-in and there isn't a lot of opposition. You know, we want to really make sure this is something everybody wants. And so, but, you know, honestly, they're all friends here. We don't have any plans for that lot. It's been sitting, I would ask for at least 10 years, yeah.
Is it going to be organic?
Yeah, we usually put that into our clause, into our contracts as well. We appreciate it.
And we have a question back there.
My question for you, I mean, could you kind of go over the water plan?
Sure.
I'm quite the gardener and I live in the Caliomi Water District. And so you said you're going to charge people $20 to $40 to have their little plot. I think this is a lovely idea to not mistake.
Yeah, nope.
But how many plots do you think you'll have? And who ultimately is going to pay for the water?
So currently, we're not, we're still trying to figure out how much, how many people actually want to have plots. Right now, we're planning for around 20, but it could be as much as 40. That's about the max. Otherwise, you know, too many people in a small space gets hard to manage.
Four people are paying $45 a month, which is a year.
A year.
Except again, you want 40, 40 for an annual, somebody else. So you've got 20 people. And let's say they're, they're all paying these 40 a month.
A year.
It's a $40 a year.
A year. There's 12 months in a year.
And then there's 20 people, and so we have more than that. But the water bill.
Works out less than $4 a month.
It definitely does. And we do have large gardens and water is one of the things that we're always working on. We encourage, and in most gardens, we require everyone to use drip irrigation. That we help and we provide everyone with their initial set of drip. We teach everyone how to use it and how to manage their water in a way that is sustainable. And then we always, something that we do is we'll tack up their water bill so everyone knows how much water they're using. And sometimes we do have to raise garden rates, which has happened in some of our larger gardens. But it really depends. Some gardens, the water set, the water cost is offset by whoever owns the land. Some gardens, it's all on the gardeners. And that's something that we're still working out with Calpine, is how the water's always going to get paid for. But that's partly where that, you know, community buy-in key goes.
Ava, can you tell us, how do, how do we get to the next step? How do the communities tell Danielle, yes, we think it's a great idea? What's the mechanism for responding?
Well, you can either email her, or you can email me. That's kind of how it's going right now. Or you can show up at one of our meetings. And we're currently tentatively planning another meeting. We still have to look at scheduling on that one. But it's probably not going to be next week, but the week after. And that's probably the best way to do it. If you're interested in having a plot, I'm probably the person you should contact.
Okay. Ma'am, you have a question here?
Yes, I have a question about the water. So what I hear you saying is that the water will either be paid for by Calpine or by the yearly fee.
Or half and half.
Or half and half. So those are the three options.
Those are the three options, definitely.
No, no grants or anything like that.
We, I mean, we can definitely apply for a grant. It's not in my current grant.
This is right?
Your contact information?
You can email me at A-R-Y-N at ncoinc.org. INC?
INC?
INC. Yep, ncoinc.org. Yeah, I'll write it somewhere. But my name's Ava Ryan, so it's just my first initial A and my last name Ryan, like the man's name.
So if you need this, you have to address her after the meeting. She'll be here for the duration of the meeting.
Yes.
Yes, right back there, I can't.
If someone has their own garden, are we, would you be allowed to come to the training that you have?
Yeah, absolutely. We do free workshops for everybody. Leadership trainers are usually just for our garden managers. But we run free workshops on a whole host of nutrition and gardening topics. And I'll let you know when those are. We're sort of having an informal one about seed starting and transplanting at the New Woodlands College, which was previously Yuba College in Clearlake, next Thursday for Earth Day, from 10 to 1.
Okay, one more question, yes ma'am.
Has, have you taught Calpine slash Caliomi water? I presume you're going to have Caliomi there. Is there any way that they can give us a buy-in on this? Have you talked to John?
I, I reached out and.
And what do we know?
I, well, what, we were, we were interested in the water quality and things like that. Those questions came up at our first meeting. So we got the disclosure on the water. And they didn't know of any, any way to take advantage of breaks or, you know, help with it. But they were going to look into it.
Did anybody talk to their board meeting?
I think I'm. We just started this, John, about 2:30.
We have a board meeting right here. Go ahead, go ahead.
So when our town lost all those houses, our district lost 40% of our income. And a little bit of that was made up initially because a lot of trucks were coming in buying bulk water from us. But there's no more bulk water going on. So our income is 40% down. So it'd be a very difficult time for us to give water away.
Because they have other rates that I'm sure don't work out.
Okay, I'm going to end it and thank you for, Ava, thank you Danielle. Before we. For Danielle, I should have done this a little earlier, so you'll have to forgive me for being old and addled. But we have a candidate's forum coming up that I want to give Danielle a chance to speak to and pass it out. And Calpine is one of the sponsors.
Okay, so just briefly, it's all three supervisory districts for election this year. So they're all listed on here, the next, next Thursday at the Visitor Center. And it is a candidate's forum venue. And press release will go out tomorrow on what that looks like. But I'll just pass these around now.
Thank you very much. Item five. Dollar General has reapplied. And it's my understanding they're going to have a planning commission hearing on the 28th, Joe?
Yeah.
And so I put this on the agenda very quickly to give people a chance to comment prior to that meeting. I've also asked the principal planner from the county to come and talk about not only that project, but there's another project coming down the road that you might be interested in hearing about. I also made particular attention to Joe Sullivan, Planning Commissioner for District 1. And he can, I don't know, you can't comment change, Joe?
Not really.
Not really, because it would have to.
He can be a good listener.
He can be a good listener. So this is the place to talk about it. And I'm going to turn the meeting over now to Audrey Knight and let her give you an update on where we're at on Dollar General. And also a, is it a quick loop type thing, Audrey?
Uh, yeah, it's a combination building. Trying to get all the specs out here.
And if you, feel free to get up and come and look at these because this is important for, for all of us. So don't be, don't be embarrassed to come up and take a look if you have any questions.
Two people told a good friend.
You bet.
Yeah, just one more. You know what, one more. And that's for the other.
I don't know today.
With the quick loop?
Yeah.
No, it's two different parts.
Two different parts.
Two different areas.
Two different.
In the same area of property?
You know, I'm not all that up on that. That's not it, my little yellow hat and they sent me an orange.
That's a good, that's a good way to say, you can't ask me that question. Okay, we're going to give you a few minutes to come up and take a look. And we're going to ask you.
I think I might have, I haven't seen, I haven't seen it yet. Have to go through all the planning department first to be able to comment first, then I can.
You're going to disappear.
Oh, yeah. I, I was made aware of that about 30 minutes ago.
Okay, so it's longer than what you knew about it. Have you seen that?
No, uh-uh. Everybody's telling me that I was on Facebook and playing. Something else we'll look at there. In a week.
I, I hear this myself last night. Right, oh, yeah.
I think you can dislike it or something. You know, they have the likes and dislikes, but no. I thought you could put a bunch of stuff, I don't know, on Facebook. I'm on Facebook to monitor the SC Gymkhana Series, Beer Gets Basketball Game, here's a video. That little lot next to that lot between. He bought it, he bought it from that. There's a empty lot between him and Caliomi. Yeah, here, he bought it last Friday. I was having a good timeout there, teary-eyed, like two youngest girls are running. I got the horse out there in the chair. We're not all that big, we are. Oh, yeah. No, no. No. Yeah, exactly. I'm going to wait for you. Kids, jeans, double entendre. Next week. Let's see here. All right, all right, all right. And the next, it's 28. This dollar general, Dollar General, and the housing thing. Yeah, exactly. All right. Housing projects go all the way back to the back door. How many guys?
I want to get them, I'm tired of them.
They had a hard time tonight? All the back door. That part I found. Yeah. I'm going to.
Don't leave the stuff in front of me.
Do you do what? Do you? Yeah, but really important to be, to be ready to go. Hello, let's go. Hey.
All right. But you know, we have two projects we're going to talk about. First, we're going to talk about Dollar General because the quick loop or whatever they want to call it, there's a brand new deal. I didn't even know about it until 20 minutes. So it's looking brand new to me too. But when you talk about Dollar General, it's coming up. I put this on the agenda so you come and express your concern and decide how you want to handle it. The Planning Commissioner is here. The Principal Planner is here. So she's going to answer the questions as soon as she makes her presentation. Please give her your, your attention and Audrey, you're on.
All right. Well, what I can tell you is that Dollar General has applied for a major use permit because the building is over 8,000 square feet in the C1 zone. They are required to go through design review. And they are also applying for a parcel map to divide the 3.74 acres of land. They originally applied for this and submitted their complete applications for both a parcel map and a major use permit. And I think it was, I have to say, the spring of last year. They were extremely patient. When the fire happened and they wanted to push forward, I said, no, it's not a good time. Let's wait until the community has got some cohesion again. And then when that started to materialize, they, of course, weren't patient to move forward. So we did give them fair warning that there's probably going to be as much opposition here in Middletown as there was in Caltiville. But they're moving forward regardless. They've already invested some time and energy in, in the process. I do have four reports here. We, we require a drainage report. This parcel, any of you who are familiar with the zoning in the county, has like six designations. It's C1, which is community commercial. It's also design review. It's also scenic combining. But it's commercial and right now, the way the county ordinance reads, commercial buildings and industrial are exempt for some reason from scenic combined, which I don't get. But, and then there's floodway fringe, waterway. And let's see, did I miss it? And something else, I missed one of them. Anyway, because of St. Helena Creek. So that parcel, as you may be aware, is fronting on St. Helena Creek. So one thing I did miss is the parcel map. So I should, I should get that up. I'm going to go ahead and circulate these. We have a drainage report. Anyone who's interested, look through it. The interesting thing about the, the drainage, because of the, the base flood elevation in this area, they're currently proposing around close to 4,000 cubic yards of fill to bring that parcel up. So that is one area that they're, they're going to have some challenges with. They also have to incorporate two large detention ponds as a result. We also have a botanical survey. I'm trying to figure out which one to talk about. But botanical survey is essentially just going through the species that are currently on the site. They, they do plan to retain the existing oak tree that's on, on site. Also have geotechnical because this is, is required in California for a lot of properties. And then the traffic impact analysis. Caltrans is requiring them to make some improvements, including a turn lane, a turn improvement sidewalks, there's a press for a transit stop. So there, they have a lot of improvements that they will need to comply on. So I can go ahead and circulate this. One is.
Are these documents online?
The studies, the technical studies are not, no. The staff report, I was working with the senior planner to finalize that today. It's very complicated, as you can imagine. So I've been going through it with a fine-tooth comb to make sure we cover all the angles and make sure both sides are fairly represented. Our, our job as the professional staff is to look. Make sure that we are evaluating it and the community is evaluating it and the planning commission and the board of supervisors is evaluating it based on policies already adopted by the county. So just to give you that. So here's the parcel. It's currently 3.74 acres and it's that, that, uh, green wedge as you cross the, the bridge. Follow our food. And the St. Helena Creek.
Butts Canyon.
Butts Canyon, sorry. Those are big streets all over the. Okay, close. So, so here's, here's the creek. St. Helena Creek is right here. Um, 29. I don't know how well you can see this, but, um, and then what they're proposing to do because of the Cal Fire, um, one acre and larger 30-foot setback requirement that they are not exempt from either, um, they're proposing to create a parcel that's less than an acre so they don't have to meet the 30-foot setback requirement. So they're proposing that, um, on the furthest stretch from the bridge, which, um, we are requiring a lineup of the driveways, um, with, I believe it's the.
By the church.
By the church. Okay, thank you. So those of you who have this map, um, can see the, the footprint. What, what I had our new planner do, he's a GIS whiz, um, was superimpose their site plan on our Google Maps. So this is essentially the footprint, the little, the blue building that they're currently proposing.
So there's two, are they proposing two buildings?
Could you hold your question until she gets through?
Right. So, so what I wanted to do is, because there are two proposals that we currently have on this side of the street that are proximal to each other, is to put them in context because they probably will be processed around the same time. Um, and because this is the northern entrance, um, to downtown Middletown, those of you who are familiar with the Middletown Plan, the, the pink building with the big parking area, um, is at the, the northern end of the defined downtown district. The Middletown Area Plan, um, defines this area right here at the, the corner as, how did I run it? Oh, there it is, up here. As the, um, designated downtown district. So, it's a great mapping point. It's red.
The corner that's across the street.
Yeah, the little, the point where the, where the gas station is and the, uh.
That's the boundary.
So that's the, that's supposedly, yeah, the entry into the, the downtown.
So is Wardlaw the boundary or is it pass border north of Wardlaw?
It's north. It's just, includes that corner. Yeah, barely. It's a small area. All right, it's in here somewhere, but, uh, I should have flagged it. All right. Um, all right. So essentially what they're proposing is the same thing that they currently have in Nice and Clear Lake Oaks, which is to, um, have a 9,100 square foot general retail store open 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, um, with two shifts of employees of two. So they have two employees during the day shift, two employees during the night shift. Um, I don't know how the total number of people that they would be employing. Um, they have worked with us on trying to redesign their building to be more consistent with the, um, Middletown design guidelines for commercial buildings. There's quite a, an extensive section of design guidelines in the Middletown Plan, which is really good. Um, so it helps to kind of set the tone for what they need to meet. They, they tried to make their formula store, um, more palatable.
Is that a tin building?
Um, metal, it's, it's, you have to give a question. I don't know if it's metal.
So maybe it's made of.
Yeah, it's in there.
This design meets this?
No, I'm saying that they have tried to make their formula building, um, meet a, yeah, certain, they've tried to, they've tried. And what you have to understand about corporate chains is that they have this very specific layout and formula. And this has to be here, this has to be there, this has to be here. It's all figured out, dialed in, don't mess with it. So what we're trying to do is make it work. Um, so this is what they've submitted. They are planning to, um, we, we first asked them to orient the building towards the front so it would be, um, facing the sidewalk with parking in the rear. Um, they couldn't do that because it didn't meet their formula.
They don't wanna be here.
Exactly.
So because it partially has to do with the fact that they have deliveries twice a day. They have these kind of medium-range regional trucks that go around and, and deliver twice a week to keep them supplied. Their stores aren't large enough to have large stock, so they have deliveries that come twice a week. And in order to, to do that, they have this whole system worked out where they come inside of a building, unload, load it in, and drive out. So their parking configuration is also kind of locked in because they have to have the side turnaround. So when you look at the site plan, the reason why you have this little ugly piece of pavement is because they have to come in here and turn around to look, to unload and load their, uh, their, their stuff. So this is their car proposal. The parcel map, if the, um, the project is approved, um, would follow, and that would divide these parcels, um, and that's a separate action that the planning commission would need to take. So this parcel would then be a remainder of 2.78, seven acres. This portion of it is pretty unbuildable. It's right next to the creek. Um, and we have required that, um, access be granted here. The downside of this is that it's clearly in a, um, it's clearly auto-oriented, it's not pedestrian-oriented. It is at the beginning of the downtown entrance to, uh, the northern entrance to Middletown, and we don't have a consolidated commercial plan for that entry parcel if the parcel map goes through. So what you may have, um, with a 3.74 acre, 3.74 acre parcel, is a consolidated commercial block, um, which creating the parcel map would preclude it. So you would end up probably having another independent standalone with parking surrounding, surrounding it at some point.
Would that mean you have an extra entrance coming?
Excuse me?
Would that mean you'd have another driveway coming in from?
Uh, probably not because, uh, because of the distance, it's too proximal. Um, and we do have to make sure that, um, Cal Fire is okay with this turnaround in terms of that Hammerhead, um, because typically they require at least two points of EGR for all, um, their services. So we're still waiting on that, but Caltrans wants to keep, um, the distances between, um, easements and access down. So I know there's gonna be a lot of questions.
Yeah. Before we get to questions, let, let's make sure we understand what questions are. Questions, you ask her a question and she gives you an answer. If you don't like the answer, I'm sorry, but she has to give you the answer that a professional would give you. We're not going to argue this at this point, okay? Down the road, we'll have more time to debate the issue, but please, when she, when you ask a question, if she gives you an answer, don't say, "I don't like your answer." Well, I'm sorry.
Or don't stand up and just tell me all your thoughts about something. Because I, I, I kinda get the feeling, I know what it tends to be here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to her and let her point out the people.
So before I answer your questions, I may be answering them by some of the things I say here. So let me just tell you what has to be, the findings that have to be made for a major use permit. The ones, there, there are, there are numbers that are fairly factual. Doesn't meet the zoning requirements, doesn't meet within the general plan. There are some others that are purposely left to the elected body and the community. Um, it's purposely left to the planning commission and the board of supervisors to interpret things like community character. Does community character mean the look? Does it mean the use? Does it mean the activity? Does it mean the nature of the business? Does it mean the size and scale? What does community character mean? What's the priority? Those things can shift, and so that's the kind of thing that's left in the findings that is up to the public and the appointed elected bodies to determine. So there are a couple of items like that, and when we upload the, um, staff report to the website, um, either Friday or Monday, you'll be able to see the findings that have to be made. Um, we cannot, I cannot tell, I cannot give a professional opinion that it is within the community character. And that is for a couple of reasons. One is you have the Shell auto-oriented station right there. You've got several independent, um, single building, commercial enterprises that are auto-oriented in the same general vicinity. The, the Jolly Cone and the, um, uh, gas station with the food.
Store 24.
There you go, store 24. So those are, those are their neighboring uses on one side. So that's the character of that area. Now, is that the direction you wanna go? Probably not, but I can't be the judge of what the community wants and, and the character and how you define it. So, that being said, um, we try to give both sides of the story so that we're, we're covering all the arguments. Um, let's see what else to cover. So, as you probably know, the, uh, the planning commission will hear this on the, the 28th. It's going to be a very full agenda. We have a number of items, including Crystal Lago's, um, reanimation and another rezone general plan amendment for property in Finley, um, as well as, uh, draft of the housing element and incorporation of hazard mitigation and, uh, community wildfire protection plan into the general plan safety element. So we have, we have a full agenda, and Crystal Lago's probably gonna just have, is just as much, um, activity and interest as the general, uh, the Dollar General. So while we have it scheduled for 10 o'clock, be prepared that that is really optimistic because Crystal Lago, I do believe, goes before you. So, you know, we may be, bring your lunch.
Bring your dinner.
Bring your.
Bring your dinner.
So with that, I will, oh, wait, one more, one more quick thing just to give you an overview. Um, the reason why I, I included this, um, this map with, um, with the presentation is because the second, um, application that's come in is a complex minor use permit and design review. It meets some of the same zones, um, but essentially what they're, what they're proposing here is, uh, to create a, again, I'm sorry about the graphic, but it's to drive in off of Wardlaw and drive in across, behind the Chevron to this building with a roundabout. Get this, combo, drive through coffee shop and car.
Oil change.
Oil change. It's a, mark, mark, bottom of the building. It's prefab, it's, it's not construction, it's basically, it comes in, they pull it in in a truck, they set it up, and it is three bays of.
With, uh, with your permission, uh, this is. No one's even heard of it.
It's still in the review period, but essentially it is a minor use permit, which basically means, um, design review is required, but with a minor use permit, um, it can be administratively approved unless there's interest by the community that it be heard by the planning commission. Um, you can request a hearing. Some of you who've gone through the minor use permit, um, know this, that it's done by the zoning administrator. I'm the zoning administrator. So, um, what we're trying to do is make sure there's enough awareness so that if it needs to go before the planning commission for design review, as a design review body, um, that it does. And I would recommend it go through the planning commission simply because by the Middletown area map, this point, this corner, point of our lands here, that, that angle is the entrance to the downtown.
It's between store 24 and.
Yeah, it's between Jolly Cone and store 24. Let's, let's try to streamline this.
No, it's not. It's not.
Hang on, hang on, let's just do one thing. How many of you feel that you'd like to make a comment on that building sometime in the future?
Yeah.
And we'll bring it back and we'll, I'll indicate to the board of supervisors that you want input on that and it should be reviewed.
Okay, so, so what, what is the nature of the, let's, let's just start with one person at a time.
I live right around the corner. I have yes or no questions.
Okay.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yes or no?
Yeah, yes or no at this point? Let's just, do we want to have input on this? I'm more interested in Dollar General because it's going before the planning commission.
They're all right around the corner from my house.
Okay.
Let's talk about the Dollar General first, but what I wanted to do is just let you know that this was here and you can get the.
And now, now the question is, how many of you are interested in making comments about this? And I will give it to the board of supervisors and the planning commission, tell them that we want input on that, even though it may be an administrative thing, we want input. So the majority of people want input. So we'll put that to bed for now and go to Dollar General, which is what's on our agenda.
All right, thank you. Okay, so questions around Dollar General?
Okay. Um, have they done any kind of study on the fiscal impact to our community?
No.
Um, what, have they studied at all the environmental impact? Because I live on Wardlaw Street. But it, uh, we have a big drain, so these guys.
St. Helena Creek.
Yeah, we have a big drainage issue that the county has never addressed. There is no sewer, there is no trench, and it's serious runoff. So granted, we have so many cars, they're grand covered in, but I would like to see an Environmental Protection Agency report telling me that that many more cars and the runoff is going to be okay running down my street. Trust me, I have a lake in front of my house all the time, and has that happened?
There is a drainage, uh, study that's been done. The, any development that occurs in, in Middletown, um, is reference to the drainage plan. So, um, as far as other off-site, I don't know where your property is, but.
Right now.
Well, okay, I have to look at the, I have to look at the geography to kind of figure out the direct impact. Um, so, so the bottom line is look at the map, um, for the drainage. You have a drainage study, but primarily there has been a drainage study. The applicant is only required to do a drainage plan and account for their impacts of surface runoff, and they have to keep their water on site. That is what best management practices require. So any drainage plan is, yes, it's keeping water on site. You are responsible, if you're a property owner, in case you don't know, to manage the water on your property and not let it affect your neighbors. So that's just the way. So, so the bottom line is, look at the map for the drainage management. You have a drainage study, but primarily, there has been a drainage study. The applicant is only required to do a drainage plan and account for their impacts of surface runoff, and they have to keep their water on site. That is what best management practices require. So any drainage plan is, yes, it's keeping water on site. You are responsible, if you're a property owner, in case you don't know, to manage the water on your property and not let it affect your neighbors. So that's just the way it works. And if we've got runoff from, you know, a property that is not managing their water on site, that's something that they need to. So, and we're. So, okay, next question.
This may be premature, but is there going to, if, just if, I don't want to get booed, if it would go through, is there a tax plus for the county?
Well, I'm sure, I mean, the very fact that they are, that they.
Do you have any questions?
She was asking, she doesn't want to get booed, so she's ducking over here. If the project goes through, she's asking, is there a tax benefit to the county in terms of sales? And, you know, they, they're clearly making bank right now with their two stores, they are really fueled to, to do a couple more. They would not be going to the amount of expense that they are having to go through to build these if they weren't, if it wasn't profitable for them to do so.
Yeah, I know, but I'm worried about the county.
Yes, and so I'm sure there's going to be tax revenue, but I, that's a really good point in terms of the fiscal impacts. Probably, they have some idea of the fiscal impacts, they just aren't sharing them. Because obviously, I mean, in order for them to determine the store location, they do their own market analysis and their market research to determine.
But in your plan, won't that come up? Because that's, let's just say it would be a benefit to the county. Wouldn't it have an impact on the board of supervisors?
So it's something that should be addressed, because it is a fiscal impact, but honestly, you know, our economic development, people have been trying to go out and grab whatever businesses are willing to come. All right, next question. Oh, you've been waiting.
You said that this property is only going to be accessible by vehicles?
No.
You said that they had no walking access.
Oh, no, I said, no. What they are required to do is put in sidewalks. They are required by Cal Plan for the length of this, for the length of the parcel, the 3.74 acres are required to put in sidewalks.
Okay, so what, how are they expecting people, do we allow people to walk, walk from wherever they're at, down the highway to get to the sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
Are, if your, the county's not going to require any kind of walking ability for people to get there?
Well, if you're saying off-site, if you're asking if we can require the developer to make off-site improvements, right now the county is not in a position to ask that. I don't know if it's.
The county's not in a position to say, can you make it accessible by walking for the.
Well, no, you, you, okay, you're putting words in the mouth.
That's what I'm asking.
They are required to put in sidewalks. How you get to that parcel is, really has to do with putting, requiring this guy to put in sidewalks and all the way down the road.
Everything.
So ideally, we have sidewalks throughout that length of 29, and that's what we're going to shoot for. But, you know, we can't tell them, you go, hey, would you mind putting a sidewalk over in front of Jolly Cone?
Really?
Okay.
Interesting, well, it comes to.
So if I heard you correctly, there, you said there are number of things that they got. One, are they complying with zone meeting? Two, are they complying with the general plan? And then three, something that's kind of not going to define community character, but you said there's a couple of other things, and then you mentioned community character. I wonder what, one thing I wondered was what the other thing?
Um, here, I'm tapping my memory here, okay. Let's see. Community character, neighboring uses.
Neighboring uses.
Neighboring uses.
My other question is, so obviously the zoning is very fixed and clear, the general plan is very fixed and clear, that community character and neighboring uses has more, is less defining, am I understanding that correctly? Who makes that decision about whether that?
The community, the community does.
Who interprets it? I mean, we've got something, you just said that has to be interpreted. So you have something written, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. You have something written, and between that written piece of paper and a decision are some decisions that are made. Who are the people that make those decisions?
So, so there are some, there are some key words that you'll notice in the design guidelines, and the planning commission is, is being given a set of the design guidelines, which are in the, which is section seven of the Middletown area plan, there is one here in the library, and it is online. Section seven is, shows photos, it gives key words, things like small-town character, there's a lot of language around the type of frontages, façades, window placement, the periodicity of how building fronts present themselves, where doors are, how buildings are fronted, where parking is in relation to the structure. There's a lot of elements to design, and they are mentioned in this book. So, community character, I mean, if you're going to define small-town character and locally oriented, those are words that are in the plan. And the interpretation of character is, you're going to define it this way, you're going to define it this way, you're going to define it this way.
I know, but maybe when the decision is finally made, who?
The community and the planning commission.
And the planning commission, okay, and so it is the individuals in the planning commission that decide ultimately, make the decision, but on whether, whether it's defined within community character.
Exactly.
They have to look at all the ordinances, all that, the area plan, the area, plus the.
And they take in the community's input, because you guys ultimately are defining the community character.
That's why the planning commissioner is here. That's why he's sitting here.
So we define, so the community defines the character. I can't tell you.
You guys are the ones that ultimately decide whether it fits into the community character. You've got four, you've got four things, zoning, general plan, community character, and neighborhood, so you guys are the ones that decide that with community and.
I just want to know ultimately, who is making that decision? You're saying.
The whole commission.
Yeah, I'm not, we're not making any recommendations. I'm not going to recommend approval or denial.
Well, that's, no recommendation.
Well, the, the role of the planners is to give professional, knowledgeable advice around a project, but ultimately, we're not supposed to be making advocacy choices around projects.
I don't understand that, but someone has to decide what community character and neighborhood.
They've answered it, they've answered it for you, for tired. The planning commissioners will make that decision.
And then it can be appealed to the board of supervisors.
All right, here, four feet.
Okay, so.
Yes, four feet.
These plans are reviewed and updated periodically. Where is it in the cycle of?
The Middletown area plan was adopted in 2010, I believe it started 2002.
It took a long time.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, 2010, and the Calberry plan, just for kicks, was 1989.
Audrey, I have a question. I have a question that we skipped over. You mentioned that they were revising their footprint, or trying to revise their footprint to alleviate the setback conditions for Cal Fire, and would that, if they decreased their footprint, would that allow another business to come?
They've already deleted it, that's why they're doing the parcel map. So they're doing a parcel map so they can get away from the Cal Fire restriction. So it's an acre or.
So they've amended the parcel map?
Yeah, so that's why, they applied for a parcel map so that they could get out of the Cal Fire setbacks.
I have a question about that. So the parcel, the big piece of, 3.2 whatever acres, is essentially divided into three sections, or two sections?
Yeah, they've got, the, the deal they have worked out with the property owner is, if this is approved, they will immediately, in fact, it is on the agenda, there's another application, that's the staff report around that parcel map, which will divide it into two parcels, one of like 0.87 or 9.6 or something, and 2.7 acres. So the remainder is, there are no current plans for it, but still.
They could choose to put something else on it.
Well, the owner could.
The owner could.
The cross-development is just in the build and lease, and they're not, they're not into building shopping complexes, they're just, you know, single source.
But the second parcel would have to meet the.
Are they calling it a remaining parcel or a?
Setbacks.
Um, I don't believe so, no, it's, it's going to be the second parcel.
The second parcel would have to meet the Cal Fire setbacks because of.
Yes. Yes, correct, okay.
Some of my questions were answered already, I just, I guess I really want to know how we get our feedback to you.
Do you want to write now?
Letters, write your letters, write, you know, email, letters to the planning commission.
You can come to the planning commission meeting.
I mean, it's really nice that they're trying to make it cute, but they're clearly not employing anybody, and they're not providing any services, and I, I just think that, you know, if we don't want it, we need to be able to go aggressively.
Bring the bag? I'm sorry.
Go with your dollars, don't give me.
I'm sorry?
I'm president of school board.
Uh huh.
And we have not seen any of this information spread across the street for you, for this project.
You did not get a, a notice, a mailing and a.
The board has not heard a word about this. We heard about it last year, that there, we have not.
So you haven't gotten a mailing?
We have a bad response from school board, but we do better.
Okay, you didn't get.
We did our next board meeting after.
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Our next school board meeting is made until after the planning commission meets. So I find that just a little unacceptable, and we have, we have a whole new management team at the school, and I think that the school district needs to be able to respond as they did in Kelseyville, with issues that they had, which are probably terribly similar to the issues that we have. So I would like at least to see the traffic plan and the proposal, and, and PP, we're going to have to request a stay on the meeting.
A continuous.
Continuance of the meeting.
Well, I, no, I apologize, what happened probably is essentially, we sent it out, at the time it was going to be going gung ho, and it got put on hold, and then we got this, this push to resurrect, and, and at the same time that that happened, everything else happened. So I apologize for the oversight in re-sending out another notice that it was coming forward. But, but we'll try to address that as best we can.
I kind of heard people, what is, so they tell the property owners?
They, they're in negotiations to buy it from the property owner, never need.
No.
Never.
Yes.
So it's, it's a contractual obligation, this is common in, in these kinds of development schemes, they, they contact the owner, they enter an agreement, if the proposal goes forward, the sale goes forward, if it doesn't go forward, then.
We'll.
Me, we don't know yet whether or not, if the project gets denied, they still want to go through with the parcel map. There are two separate actions.
And then one other thing, I just thought, I've heard you say for years that Middletown didn't allow these types of.
Chain?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that, that's a good point, there are some policies in the general plan that try to get to providing goods and services within proximity to population and increasing jobs. So those are some of the kinds of things, reducing vehicle miles of travel or BMT, so people aren't having to drive to Clear Lake or Santa Rosa or Napa or some other place to get goods and services. So there are policies in the general plan, and even in, I believe, the Kelsey, or the Middletown plan that address some of those issues as well. So that's the kind of, the balance between the goods and services, the driving, the stores, the availability, and community character. I think over here, you have.
I, I just want to kind of readdress something that Dan and Kimberly had mentioned, like, trying to get information on how we can get our voice heard, and I, I heard the planning commission on the board meeting say, well, you're doing it right now, but we were just told that this is just a time for questions. So I don't feel like this is going to be a time for us to voice our opinion, and I think that's the wrong way. The whole thing was a little confusing, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't think that all meetings show, and then the gentleman sitting to your left was shaking his head, no, when you were just speaking about the general plan from Middletown and chain stores, and I'm not sure what your.
We're not connected.
No.
The real time for public input on this measure now would be April 28th at the planning commission. Everybody will have a chance to speak, I mean, literally, we spend hours sometime letting the community speak. So what we'll do is we'll open the, the meeting, and then the, the county will introduce the project, we'll do an overview, everything else, and then the board has a question, has a brief time we can ask questions directly, try to answer some questions ahead of time, and then we'll, I'll open it up for public speaking, and, uh, public questions, and you can come up and you sign your name and state your name, and then you can, then you can offer your opinions, or ask questions, or all that.
I want to explain something. The reason we have questions, and we have the expert here, is so that we give people that don't, haven't made up their mind, an opportunity to ask questions, so they can go away and express and, and make a decision. You telling us, the board and Matt, that you don't, you're opposed to us, doesn't do anything. That's the planning commission. All we're trying to do is give you an opportunity to ask questions of the professionals, so that you can make an intelligent, informed decision, and then you can go to the planning commission and express your concerns. Expressing them to me is not going to help.
I guess that was what we needed clarification on.
Yeah, that's the process. The planning commission is what is, is the first line, and if, if they say, yes, we love it, and you don't love it, then you can appeal it, and then it will go through the board supervisors. On the other side, if they say, we hate it, and Dollar General loves it, they can appeal it and go back to the board supervisor. This is just a chance for you to ask the experts what's going on, that's all.
You can also write a letter, you can also send emails, and they'll print those for us, and prior to the meeting, we always get there early, most of us do, and so those will be laid out in green sheets even at their last minute. There'll be green sheets for us to read if you can't make it, and so we'll always go through all those prior to the meeting.
Let me, let me just add something to this, which is.
County development park.
That you can, as a, as an appointed entity, also have a summary of members with an opinion or a vote, as, as an organization that's appointed by the board of supervisors. So that is, that is another venue, if you, if there is a consensus around position, similar to what a business chamber or any other organization would do.
But it's more powerful if you show up.
Absolutely.
All right, other questions that haven't been answered yet?
I have two separate questions. My first question is, Kelseyville folks that know the location where they were, have they been appealed yet by the Dollar General to move somewhere else?
They are going, they have a site in.
The Riviera.
So, yeah, the Riviera, one of the vacant buildings is their, is their new proposal, and they will tear that one down and put up another.
Okay, so where is our second proposal for them?
We don't, right now we.
If they get denied here, do they have another lot there?
As far as we know, they don't have another one located.
They went up at our last meeting, center meetings last year, they're not interested in any other location.
And did they say that as well about Kelseyville?
They basically said they want two more stores in Lake County.
Okay.
They, you know, similar to what Verizon and other people say, they, they want to make sure they cover the market and get, you know, make it, make it as efficient as possible for those delivery trucks.
That's the big company you are.
So back there.
My question is, is it in the mornings and stuff, this is extremely high-traffic areas that are turning out, and with the Christian school across the street going, are they going to be required to put a stoplight in there if this goes through?
No, they're trying to line up the, the intersections so that they are across from each other, so you don't have that awful juxtaposition of figuring out which way to block.
Right, but what I'm talking is the traffic going straight through the other schools, there's several accidents every year, just trying to go into the driveway that's there. And when they did the improvements at Hartman and Valley, they were, they were required, you know, to put a stop sign and that kind of thing, which helped tremendously. Cino was required to, you know, make a huge improvement on their in and outs, and just, you know, a turn lane or lining it up.
They're, they're required a turn lane, and they've agreed to put it in.
Well, is it a turn lane or a suicide lane? They can't agree to it, they're, they're vaguely aware that that's on the.
And is that because they're looking at, at making the property smaller so that they don't have to meet the Cal Fire, there's a setback, some restrictions, is that part of why they don't have to, you know, why they're setting it this way so that they don't face the road and all that kind of thing, is that their day?
No, there's, there's, you know, in designing any site plan, there's a lot of factors at play, and as I pointed out, they have to, they have to, they do not want that, they first came in with a product with it oriented this way, with parking in the front, just the way it is in Nice, and, we were like, oh, no, that's not going to work. So, unless you can push the building up, and they said, no, we can't. So unless you can push the building up, and they said, "No, we can't do that." So then they came up with this compromise, which puts their delivery trucks over here, but it reduces the amount of asphalt in the front of the store. They are required, obviously, to do extensive landscaping and fencing and, you know, the other kinds of ramifications.
Right, well, this is right behind those houses that are right there.
Excuse me?
Means that this lets up to the homes that I know a lot of burned and they're rebuilding and all that kind of stuff. Are they required to have anything special because they're right literally on a residential spot?
Yes.
And those backyards look over that Hartley lot?
Yes, they are required, what, right now, the only proposal to screen that is wooden fence. And there's, and they are required to obviously meet the county noise standards and so the 10 to 10 hours of operation would be important. Night sky, dark sky, lighting is definitely an issue, it cannot impact the neighboring residences. So that's something that they're trying to take into account as well as a mitigation in the conditions of approval.
Where can we find like the demographics of what would use the Dollar General compared to like Nice and Clear Lake Oaks? So that if our demographics aren't even close to what they're servicing, how do we know that this isn't gonna close down when we have this?
Well, it's a good question, but, yeah, I haven't, they wouldn't, they've kind of done the numbers. Yeah, they've done the numbers. Now, granted, we've had a lot of demographics shift, you know, currently. So they're, so they're not, so they may not be as, you know, savvy with the current demographic situation as they think they are.
But they feel like there is a market before...
Yes. And it's primarily, it has to do with, when people do market research, they look at what they have in terms of those goods and services and the distance people have to go to get a like service. So when they draw that market radius, they, there's a long way to go to get a lot of their products at that price range.
Just people are asking two questions.
So that's why they, you know...
Audrey, we have, we have some more agendas and this could go on until midnight, I know. Wait, 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 steady, steady. You've already asked a question, so have you.
I asked, but you...
Wait a minute, not now. This is not the end of the world. Things are gonna start to foundation tomorrow. What I'd like to ask you all is, before the 28th meeting, we want to be able to go and represent, from Matt to the planning commission, your wishes. And in order for me to do that, I need your approval. And I need to know...
But you don't know all the details, we're not saying...
Well, look...
I think we've done it in three other meetings. We just wanna know three other meetings, I think you know.
We, that's right, that's why I'm gonna ask the question. We've done this three or four meetings. So the question is, how do you feel about the Dollar General in its present form, design and location? Are you in favor of it? If you say yes, raise your hand. If you say no, raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, now...
How can we get the agenda for that?
Planning commission? It's online.
It's online.
No, how can we get the meeting pushed back for that?
You can't. The meeting's gonna be held at 28th. No, wait, steady, steady. The meeting in the 28th is gonna go forward. If we go as a body and we go and I say to Joe Sullivan and the other commissioners, "We are adamantly opposed to this in its present form and its present location and da-da-da," then perhaps we can get the commissioners to hold on until we have more meetings about it. Because we weren't notified of this meeting either, just for the record. School board wasn't notified, Matt was not notified, and we are on the list for notification for any and all major use permits. So that we can plan.
Do you have the ground right there?
Oh, I know that, I understand that. But I need, I can't go as an individual and say, "I'm opposed to it." I have to go as the chairman of Matt and say, "We held a meeting and there was a whole group of people and they are opposed to this in its present condition." And now I have the authority to do that. Okay? And that's all we can do. We can, that's all we can do right now. And hopefully, and I'm sure Joe will express that to the other commissioners, that we want to have more input. I don't know what ramification it is to divide that land up. Are we gonna have another little store there or are we gonna have another entrance into Highway 10? I don't know, so...
I'm just wondering, I wanted to... One question about the fire, because obviously this is a huge, we're all scared of a fire, right? What I've heard from fire personnel, maybe Joe, you can attest to this, I don't know, but I've heard that these types of stories that sell this stuff that's from China, that if there is a fire, you know, they have to put on extra protective gear to actually protect themselves if they were...
No, 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 you're going down a road, you're going down a road that won't fly. And I'll tell you how I know this. Let me tell you, wait a minute, let me tell you how I know this. Last time we had a meeting, everyone said they're selling things from China, they're selling things in China. So I went to Hardesters and shopped 25 items. Every one of them was made in China.
But do they have cal fire standards? Yes, they do. This company doesn't have cal fire standards.
How do you know that?
Because they just, she just said that they, they...
No, that is a setback, that is a setback, not cal fire today.
So I have a super quick, a quick one for you. What is the contact information? You're saying to send emails and letters? Can we get exactly where to send those to?
Yeah, we can send, who's the planner?
Mike Lynn Duvall.
Mike Duvall.
So, but you can also send it to the community development website, I mean, there is an email. If you go to the community development website, you can send, it's about the Dollar General, we'll get it.
If you go to the website, if you go to the county's website, there's a planning, there's a planning commissioners page here, my web, my email's there and so on.
No, it's not actually, that's when they're...
Let Lisa ask her question, your arms have been up for an hour. Lisa?
It was.
I had to search for it.
Ma'am, please, control yourself, will you please? Does somebody else have a question? Given the time?
I have two really quick questions, okay? The first one is with regard to the setback, if we know that they're doing something in order to change the way that we are being able to perceive something, in other words, they're changing the zoning so that they don't have to abide by a law that exists, particularly if it has something to do with fire, with cal fire, then it seems to me like we should say no, first of all. Second, that side actually do hate that, so...
But it's a zoning thing.
No, actually, in this case, the property zone C1 has been 3.74 acres. They could go into that property and buy the entire or negotiate the lease for the entire 3.74 acres, but because their store only really needs an acre or less, they don't want to buy 3.74 acres. So like any other developer, they negotiate with the owner and work out what's gonna work for them. Now, if it was only, you know, 3.74 acres in a commercial strip mall went in there of some kind, they would be required to meet the 30-foot setback if the property was not divided.
Is that setback, a setback from the fence of the neighbors who live right there in the neighborhood there? And is that gonna, is that what's changing, is how far they are from the neighbors? Because that's a big deal to those neighbors who live there.
That's a good point, yes. So one of the things I was gonna add to this is if you, one of the problems that we had with the Kelseyville Dollar General in denying that is unless there is, unless you can say what uses would be acceptable there, what patterns would be acceptable, what types of buildings would be acceptable, what types of businesses would be acceptable, it's really hard to deny a commercial project that's coming in with a use that's allowed. The use itself is allowed. The only reason why they're going through a major use permit is because the C1 zone has a maximum size of 8,000 square feet and they're proposing 9,100. That is the only reason why they're having to come in for a major use permit. And they would, the only thing that they would then have to go through is design review. And so in a way, we're lucky that they're just a thousand, you know, square foot over that they have to go through a major use permit.
Okay, the second part of my question, this is really important, okay? How much more impact will we have as a community if we show up at that planning meeting?
Yeah.
To say, yes, show up if you want, if you want to have more impact, then show up because people need to hear that straight away. Make time and show up because that's the only way we're gonna, we're gonna make change happen.
And if you, if you show up, you know, the important thing is to have your ducks in a row. What exactly about this project are you opposed to? What can you talk about in specifics? Not just, "I don't like it." It has to be something beyond that. Because in order for the planning commission to make a decision, they have to make findings and they have to say why and under what circumstances they are denying something. They have to say, "Hey, it doesn't meet this finding. The community character is defined by X and this doesn't meet it." And if they can't do that, it puts them in a bad light as well. So it makes it really tough for them if they don't have specific grounds on which to deny something.
So, but we're fortunate that we have a Kelseyville example that we can all learn on.
And chapter seven.
And chapter seven, so that is...
There you go.
Chapter seven, yes. That's your, I wish every community had those because that would really save us a lot of trouble.
After that parcel split, does that change the zoning?
The zoning does not change unless they apply to rezone. Splitting a parcel is just, it's just dividing a land area.
They're just, they have a certain set of rules and they're playing within the rules to get what they want. And if it's not against the law, it's just, that's what they're doing. And the same thing is not moving the building or making it the way you want it to look. They're within their right to do that and they're playing within their rights. That's the only thing that sucks about this.
Right. No, we have to, those are the rules and it's the zoning, the zoning's on the map, this is a use that's allowed.
That's right.
And we at the county have to process what an applicant submits.
So hopefully everybody comes into my department here, that everybody's disgruntled about how they're treating us to get what they want.
Yes.
Just a minute, no, wait a minute. Sit down.
One more question, I only have one second.
Would you guys control yourself for a minute?
One moment, one moment. I just want to say, Jennifer put out a post asking people to sign on change.org yesterday, asking for community signatures, there's 296 people that signed up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I agree with all that, but as Audrey said, we can't go into that meeting and I'm not going to go into that meeting and say, "We don't like it." Because the planning commissioners say, "Why?" So I've gotta have input from you. Do we not like the design? Do we not like the location? Do we not like the configuration on the lot? We have to have a solid reason. All the above, I know, I know that.
More important to have it proactive instead of saying what you don't want, it's equally important to say what you do want because the land is zoned, C1.
That's right.
It is zoned, C1. And unless the community decides, "No, we don't want any more commercial," and they go back and reopen the Middletown plan, the landowner has that land as C1. And if you look at what that entails, this use is within that description.
The last time we went through this, the body said, "We don't like the way the building stands on the lot because all of the stores in Middletown set up near the road and we want it to fit in with the rest of it." So they did move it a little, but very little. And we said, "We want this kind of facade," and they said, "No, we're not gonna change that." So those are, those are really good arguments for, for the commission to deny the use. But we have to have a good argument, not because we don't like Dollar General, okay?
So here's my argument. To me, the timing is very suspect. We have so much going on here, we are trying to rebuild. Why is it in the air change right now?
That has something to do with it.
Here's the...
Here's the... Here's the good question, okay? It's pretty cut and dry. The land is zoned right. They come in, they looked at all the ordinances and everything, figured out how to work it. The issue that we, our biggest issue right now that before everybody, to these guys when it comes time, is it does not meet the area plan. And what good is the plan that we all designed if you're not gonna follow that? It does not meet the plan. That's the biggest thing. We're on fire with that and why it does not, and that's spelled out in the plan. If you want Fletcher to stand up there in front of the board supervisors group representing all of you, that's the biggest argument we have right now. Period. End of discussion, I mean, really...
And not meeting the area plan means the setback, the look and the aesthetics, the aesthetics of it.
Everything.
It's a vulnerability in a commercial zone piece of property. We just don't like the way it looks. Don't say, "We don't like it because they sell things from China." That is not gonna fly.
But it's also part of your plan was to have cottage industries rather than chains.
Oh, well, chains, chains, you want to know about chains? Anything with three stores of yours are chain, Hardesters, Shell, Standard, okay, so there's lots of chains.
In the plan, it does say that the plan, we wanted cottage industries.
Well, you go find them and I'll sure support them.
Now, there is one other issue here. Recently, there was a plan done, safe highways, and it was put together as one plan, Middletown area plan and all that. And there's certain things as far as, that were addressed in those plans as far as the layout of the town and future growth. Design guidelines and all that. That was part of this thing that was done, I think it was last year or the year before.
Year before.
SR 29, which is still online if you want to look at that too. Again, our issue is, is here's a company, they bought it, whether they bought it or they're leasing a piece of property, have every right under free economy to put a business there. It's zoned right, it's all there. Now, are they following all the plan? There's the county plan they have to follow and then we have our area business plan. They're not following our area business plan. If they decide to put up a western facade and put it up by the street and all that, we have no grounds to stand, honestly. We're not doing that. That's part of the area plan in section seven, the Middletown area plan. That's, that's your battle right there.
Check the box. Back along.
Can we go on to another item?
First of all, thank...
Thank you.
We'll see you next week, Audrey. All right, we're only gonna do one more item and then I'm gonna set it off, item seven and eight. And the item six is gonna be very quick, so, because it's getting late. You know, every year, we help sponsor, anyone that gets something, maybe should be shot. And every year, we sponsor a chili cook-off, bye-bye. And we do it as benefit for the senior center. We believe in the senior center, we believe it serves a real purpose for the community and we want to support it in every way possible. So we have a chili cook-off that we sponsor. If you want to try to win a thousand bucks, you can come cook your chili and if you have the best chili, you win a thousand bucks. Before we get to that, there's a little sponsorship form that I want to pass out to everyone. Remember, remember, all the donations for this is taxing them because the senior center is a 501(c)(3). Now, the key to this is you don't have to necessarily donate money, you can go out and get other people to donate money. So I'm gonna pass these out and please try to invest. We made $5,000 promptly for the senior center last year. In their bank, we got $5,000 off, $5,000. And we were very happy because it helps, deals on wheels, it helps programs because senior center does a lot of things besides the, they have a program, they have a cash cell, they have... They have a program, they have a cash cell, they have some kind of-
It's 11 hours.
So if you know a business, and they can donate, they can donate, the senior center can sponsor, that's to help our senior center and our seniors, it will do better. So please, help by getting your friends and the other businesses to support it, to show your support. And I'll be talking about this again before the end of, before the end of it. Okay. I'm gonna delete our delay, items seven and eight, which are the gateway signs of Trailside Park. There's things going on in Trailside Park you should know about. They want to build a building in Trailside Park. County and Hope, and you should know what's going on, and they have not asked us for any input at all. I heard it's due to the Great Mine, and they're gonna put a big dormitory out there, and then they say they're gonna-
Did you discuss what we discussed last night?
Is that City of Hope you discussed?
City of Hope.
But we did, we did discuss it.
We did, we didn't know for sure what's going forward. Now we believe that it's gotta go forward, so let's, let's, let's think about that at our next meeting. Yes, Mr. Rosenthal?
Dormitory, do you know what the footprint is, where exactly it's going?
I do not know. But I did meet with City of Hope on the property, they said, we're gonna put it right here. And it's gonna be quite a big building. And I even heard that one of the supervisor candidates wanted to turn it into a homeless shelter, which I know is totally false. And that's ridiculous, of course.
I heard they were gonna turn it into a youth center after they were done with-
There are possibilities, what they do-
There's possibilities of that. But before we support it, we should know exactly what it's gonna look like, what it's gonna do, and what's gonna happen to it after they get on.
But I will just take a phone call, if you suggest I be shot and walk out of here.
No, of course not. Of course not. I wanted to go with you, but I'm-
I just gave the notification, I took a phone call, my cell's gone.
You watching, okay?
Yes, but I heard you said you shot him. Okay. All right. So regarding, regarding the building with the Trailside Park, is that not what you saw? When they, when they told you where it was gonna be?
Yes, right off of one sec, be quiet.
Okay, so they gave us some information, you just want to see their more developed plans.
Well, number one, number one, that, I talked to one of the committee, one of the members of the committee, that originally took that in, and took us for the county, and they were very specific about what it could be used for. It was to be an equestrian park, period. No buildings at all. Now, the fire, I agree, it's changed a lot of things, but do we want to support that? I like to be notified, I think Matt has a right to be notified what's going on officially. We've not been notified officially at all.
But somebody came and just talked to us later.
Not on that building.
Not on the building, but on the concept.
So no, not on that building. They talked about a lot of things, but not on that building.
Recovery meeting.
We didn't get any pictures, but they described what they were gonna do.
The recovery meeting, they talked about it, but not at that.
I was curious.
Yeah, they did talk about it, yeah.
They mentioned that it could happen.
Well, we need to talk about it more.
Yeah, we had to.
Yeah, they had to.
Okay, any other questions? Motion been made to adjourn? All of the-
Are we doing agenda items for May 12?
Yes.
I would like to add the cleanup for downtown.
Downtown cleanup.
What day? Oh, that's the next meeting.
Should make the motion talk about that.
And bylaws revision.
We have to do that before the, we have to do the, before the Chili Cook-Off.
Anybody that has an agenda item, we don't have to do it here. It's not, it's not the board or myself to get an agenda item on. Okay? Okay, any questions? There's been a motion to adjourn?
They want my email, I'll take it, and they give it.
Yeah, if you want Joe's email, you can, he'll figure out a few minutes.
I'll second that.
All of his favor, I.